Yeah, I'd say so. That looks like the good that's out there.
Let's make sure we pull them down and use them. Good evening, everyone. This is the Leamington Planning Board for, what, April 16th, and it's unusual that we meet on a Tuesday, but I think you all know it was because we had the holiday, and we don't meet on holidays as a general rule because the Town Hall is closed. First on the agenda is a public hearing for Joe Brown, who...
Is here.
Is here, yep, I see him. And Joe, if you could go to the microphone, please. The way a public hearing functions is that you stand up, you tell us all what it is you plan to do. We open it up to the public, they ask you any questions they want, the planning board asks any questions they may have. And then usually before the end of the evening, we vote on your application. We do have a couple of other items to go through before we get to that, but that's sort of how the evening will progress, okay?
Yep.
All righty, so if you can tell us what your plan is.
Yeah, I'm looking to put in a 60 by 60 parking lot off of Mildred. It's for five cars and a spot for people to pull in, and I'm gonna have some hama sheds. They're gonna be coming and going. Possibly, mostly of it's gonna be pretty much buildings that you could have built, I'm gonna leave them there and build, you know, spec the way people want 'em, and then deliver.
And I'd ask you to speak into the mic because we do have a TV audience, and if you don't, they don't hear what you're saying, so...
Yep. That's about it? It's pretty cut and dried.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up. Are there any questions, concerns from the public? Anybody wanna ask Joe any questions, wanna make any comment? Yes, sir. You go to the mic and state your name and your street address, please.
Hi, Jim Turey, 23 Mildred Lane. I guess the questions are like, are there gonna be lighted signage that might stay on overnight?
That's something we will address with him before we make the vote.
And will there be a permanent structure built on the parking area? And will there be any construction, as in any waste, that'll come off of the, you know, the construction, that area? And will there be any signage as to say not to park on Mildred Lane?
We can do that.
And I think that's about it.
Okay. Joe, I would, I know as far as the signs are concerned, we have a sign bylaw within the ordinance, and if Mr. Brown wants a sign, he would have to comply with the size, and he would get that through the code enforcement officer. And as far as lighting is concerned, the street signs are usually not lit. Not saying it can't be, but usually not, and as far as signage or any lighting on the building, that is always a part of the approval is that no lighted, lighting can shine in any of the budding houses, okay? As far as any permanent structures, I think you said, no, Joe, they were just gonna be, you know, on a platform or something, and then they would be built off-site.
Yes, they'll be built off-site. There won't be any building done there, period. Won't be any scrap. There would be no lighting. There's gonna be a sign, I'm gonna go as wide and as big as Craig will allow me to do, which I believe is a four by four. There might be on one of the buildings, a banner.
That's something else you speak with Craig about also. Because permanent banners, I believe, are not allowed in the, you might have a opening sale sign kind of thing, or something like that, but permanent banners are not allowed in any ordinance. It would just be a street sign.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's about it.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, concerns, thoughts? Anybody from the board have any questions? You will notice that Donna got, he did not include his lease with his application. We all, we all missed that, and we all have copies of it now, so he, he does have a lease from Trico for that property. Anybody on the planning board have any questions? Nope. All right, I guess that's it. What we're gonna do now is move on to the rest of our agenda, and if you wish to stay, you can. It might be another half hour or so before we take a vote on your application. Or you can call the Town Hall tomorrow and find out what...
Yeah, I've got a cow having a calf, and I gotta head up there and take care of it.
Bigger priority than...
So if that would be, that'd be fine.
Not a problem, and what we do anyway is... No, we don't need that in a minute. What we do anyway is Donna, I have 10 days to write what is called a notice of decision, and whatever conditions the board wishes to put on the application, we put them on, and you will get a copy of that.
Okay.
So it might be a week or two weeks max before you get it.
That's fine.
Okay?
Yep. Thank you.
We thank you for, oh, by the way, before, before you go, I should ask, does, does anyone, I think I asked last time. We don't need to do a site walk here, it's a pretty straightforward thing.
If you wanted to go out there, there's ribbons off Mildred showing where the entry's gonna be and what the 60 by 60 is gonna...
The stipulations will probably, most of them, a lot of them, I won't say all of them, will be on the construction of the driveway.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we're a little bit early, but I don't think it will make a lot of difference, is an application for a Dole's Orchard box shop, for a woodworking shop, by Mr. Bunting, Earl Bunting. Earl, would you or some like to go up and tell us exactly what it is you plan to do?
We have a small woodworking business, and we are trying to repurpose a pole building that we built, I don't know, 20 years ago. Half of it as material storage and a half of it as a woodworking shop. And we're adding one of the sheds that we used to use for our pick-your-own to one end of the building as a tool room.
Okay. And you plan to sell objects from this business?
Yes.
Yes, okay, okay. One thing I did notice on, you have submitted a, you're not building any new barn or anything like that?
No, no, it's an existing building.
Right, but I did notice that you have just an area marked off of parking, but you don't have the number of parking spaces delineated. So what, what we'll do tonight, if the board wishes, is to accept your application, and then we'll, in your application, you listed all the abudders. Donna will send out letters to all the abudders. When we next meet, which will be, I think, May 5th, if that's the first Monday in May, we'll have a public hearing, and any of the abudders who wish can come. And that's, at that time, we'll, we'll vote, so all we're doing as far as voting tonight would be to accept your application. But I would say, from my point of view, by the time we meet on the 5th, you need to have a drawing that shows your parking spaces clearly delineated. And you can work with Craig on that, he can tell you how many you would need based on the space of your, of your workshop.
Okay.
Okay?
And it's May 6th.
It's May 6th, not the 5th.
The 5th is Sunday.
Okay, thank you, it would be May 6th. So does anyone wish to do a site walk there?
I do have a question, though.
Sure, go.
Are you doing retail sales on it?
No.
So what, why does he need parking lot?
Well, he said he was gonna sell, I asked him if he was gonna sell...
Well, we're selling what we're producing, but we're not selling it there. It's almost all wholesale.
Oh, you, oh, I misunderstood. I thought you were having...
No.
It's all wholesale sales?
Yes. We do some online sales, retail, but...
So you would need some parking spaces delineated?
Just for employees.
Well, if you're doing online sales, does that mean you're gonna mail everything to people, or will they come to your shop to pick it up?
We ship everything.
You ship everything?
Yes, we don't do any onsite retail.
How many employees you have?
Right now, nine.
Nine employees, and you know they have at least nine parking lots up there. And you got plenty of room for that?
Yes, there's room for 30 or 40 cars there.
All right, just so that we have it more clearly defined, that's all we need.
Yep.
Anybody else? Well, I should get the question answered about a site walk. Does anyone wanna do a site walk? Yeah, I personally would like to go see it, I don't know, so, could we? We usually do them on Saturdays. I would, if I'm gonna do it this Saturday, I have house guests, I'd like to do it like at 9:00 or 9:30 in the morning. Does anyone else, does that agree with everybody? This coming Saturday?
No, that's backwards.
I won't be able to, I've got my grandson. I will not be able to Saturday, I've got my grandson.
Well, we can do it another day, we could do it after, at the end of the day. What is best for you?
Doesn't matter to me, I live there.
We wanna do the 27th, I could do Thursday.
Thursday? Sure, okay, we'll do Thursday, the, what is that, the 27th?
No.
The 18th.
I can't do four, but you don't need me.
Four, five, four, three...
It start at eight, so...
I could do 5:30 or 6:00. I have a, a car appointment at 4:30.
Okay.
So it's just smack in the middle of it.
Thursday after?
Yeah, I can do the...
As long as we do it before the public hearing, I don't care when it is.
That's the 25th.
Can definitely do Thursday.
We can do the 25th, yeah, and I'd be fine at 4 o'clock then.
25th at 4?
Is that okay?
Sure.
24, 25, at 4 o'clock, did we say?
Thursday, the 25th at 4.
At 4 o'clock.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Bunting?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay.
Okay. And what is the address that we're going to?
187 Dole's Ridge Road. It's Dole's Orchard.
But you don't have these signs up anymore.
No.
So you have nine employees already, already doing this work? So you already have parking for them, right?
Yes.
We just need to have it shown on here for future reference, that's all. All right, so is there a motion to accept the application for Mr. Bunting for a workshop, woodworking workshop on Dole's, on 187 Dole's Ridge Road?
Make a motion.
And Bob's definitely... Are those in favor? Okay, so we will see you on the 27th at 4 o'clock.
25th.
Oh, my God. We'll see you whenever, I'll be there whenever they tell me to be there. That's the best thing to do with me.
I've got the 18th.
We're doing it the following way. Okay, and then we'll do the public hearing on May 6th, and it will be at 7 o'clock.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yes.
You're not doing the orchard at all, so all nine of these people work at the, are gonna work at the wood shop?
Yes. The... We have buyers for the farm, for the farm land, we're keeping the house and...
I guess my question is, why are you here? If there are, if you already have been doing it, why...
We're expanding into another building.
Oh, okay. Explains that.
Okay.
I guess.
Blaze Brewing is still planning to buy the farm, or the farm land. I'm sure he will be in to see you guys shortly. They, they have a string of restaurants up and down the coast.
Right, we remember meeting with him last year.
Their most profitable restaurant burned last year at the end of July in Camden. And they've been at war with their insurance company and their landlord. But they're selling a piece of property in Bangor that will enable them to close on the farm.
Okay, that's good, because that seemed like a really positive addition to...
Yes, yes, and their plan is still in the works, it's just been...
Delayed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Always it been delayed.
That's good to hear. Okay, well, thank you for coming in, we appreciate it. Okay, now let's see if I can get through the next one without missing it here. Next is Steve Colby, who wants to create a minor subdivision over on Christian Hill Road. Steve, I take it Mr. Lallong is gonna speak to you? This is, by the way, this is a preliminary plan, so we're just in to discuss preliminarily what he wants to do, and then they'll be in with a with their full application, because the preliminary plan does not... Okay, guys, the preliminary plan does not start the clock running, so the, when he comes back in with whatever corrections, et cetera, we want on the preliminary plan, that will start the timeframes running.
Yeah, I think what we have there is just a sketch plan, so it's...
Well, I call it a preliminary, I'm wrong, you're right, it's a sketch plan. Thank you, Mike.
The beginning, the beginning thing of this is what he wants to do, and let's see what that's gonna entail.
Yep.
So there's a total of four lots. The first two on the left-hand side are undeveloped, and then the, the next one to the right has been sold, I think, a year, maybe two ago. I can have that for the preliminary. And then the far lot to the right doesn't have enough square footage to be a buildable lot, so he's probably just gonna keep that as raw land for now.
So it's basically lots one, two, and three as delineated?
Correct, and three has been sold already, and four is just, it's near a brook here.
Four doesn't even have a lot number on it, which is understandable.
So this is on Christian Hill Road. If you're going down Route 25, you turn up on Christian Hill Road, you only go maybe not even two tenths of a mile. There'll be a brook that crosses, that's the beginning of our property, and then it goes up over the hill, up to where there's a house on the left side, and his property line is opposite that. We haven't marked anything out there yet. I don't know what your typical way of doing it is, if you do a site plan after the preliminary plan or before.
We'd kinda like to have it, I personally kinda like to have it before, if possible.
That's what I think would make most sense, that way you guys can look at it and give us some instruction on, you know, anything that we should be looking at as far as the preliminary plan. So I just looked in the soils book, a lot of it is the, I think it's called SCARI, but it's, it's basically very stony, fine, sandy loam, eight to 15 percent. And then the other one...
On all three lots?
Is SRB, and that's SCARI, very sandy, very stony, fine, sandy loam, zero to eight percent slopes. So it's, it's kinda gravelly, but they, they're saying that some of these have like large rocks, that's three percent of the volume. So when you dig, you're gonna hit some big rocks. But it's well-drained sandy soil, for the most part, on the two lots that he's looking to develop.
Well, he's actually looking to develop three, right?
There's one already built.
Oh, it's already built, oh, I thought...
Yeah, built and sold.
Oh, I thought it was just sold, not built, thank you, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and obviously we need to see where the driveways coming in, and the contours of the land, and, well, you know, the basics. You've been doing this for a while, so you know.
And I would suggest just going off from the USGS topo map for the contours, but when you go up there, you'll see from the road, the upper two lots on the left, it is kind of a higher plateau of land from the road, so he's gonna have to design some driveways to go up in there, and...
Septic tank locations?
What's that?
Septic tank locations?
Yeah, test pits?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll do that for the preliminary plan. We, should we only just need to do two on the two vacant lots? The septic system's already in on the sold one, and the one in the brook?
Right, it's not...
Near the brook, he's not gonna do anything with, as far as the house.
Right, I would ask you to speak with the EMO, the fire chief, about whether you need a system or any fire protection issues there. Now, the brook's way down on the corner over here, right? Anything else the board wants to see or say?
And we, we would probably ask for the two waivers that we usually do with a high-intensity soil survey, because that entails digging test pits every 50 feet throughout the whole site, and have a, have a site evaluator looking at it, and then determine where the gravelly sand is, where the loamy sand is, and where the mud is. So it's quite a bit of work to do a high intensity. And then also, I believe, there's one about slipping off the top of my head, as far as drainage and, and stormwater stuff, because this is basically gonna be just a driveway and a house, so it's not any more impact than if, you know, any other person building a house is. You know, they're not changing a whole lot of landscape or anything. So the biggest impact is gonna be a house and a driveway, as far as impervious, and very little earthwork, you know, just the septic system and house.
And the driveways will be coming off Christian Hill Road.
Yeah, yeah, that's the only access we have. And I haven't gone out there yet to mark any of the corners, but I'll do that with Steve, and then see where he thinks, you know, he'd wanna put a driveway in to access the two upper lots. And we can mark that out. The thing is, on this, the, the road kinda curves out, so where the road is, there's quite a distance to get to the stone wall where the right-of-way is for Christian Hill, so there's, there's quite a distance there just to even see the front property markers.
Okay. I think, I, I think we should do a site walk, but I'm not sure when would be the appropriate time if you don't have the markers out of...
Oh, we can set the markers prior. I can set them out there tomorrow if you want.
No, well, it'll be too early.
We can do it whenever.
So at this point, you, you have whatever time, I think you have 30 days, it might be longer, 60 days, I can't remember what this says, to come back in. So it's up to you when you wanna come back with the preliminary plan, really.
Well, I think if it would work the best is a sketch plan, and then you guys can take a look at it, and then we can, from that point, we'll bring a preliminary plan in, you know, at our next available meeting. So whether it's 6, 30 days, or whenever.
I was just gonna say, it might be nice to have a sketch plan done before we do the site walk, so we can kind of envision it when we go.
You didn't get a plan, a big plan that shows...
Oh, I thought you said you were...
Oh, yeah, he submitted.
I thought you said you were coming in with...
No, this is a sketch plan, this is just like, this is how big the lots are, this is where the road is, and then you guys can come out, look at it, and say, okay, you know, this is pretty simple, or we're gonna need to have, you know, this amount of work done to make decisions.
Sorry, I thought you were coming in with yet another sketch plan.
No, no, the next, the next step would...
We're actually doing it right this time, because usually what we do is I will, you know, do the survey, show all the lots with dimensions, yada, 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 and that's more the preliminary plan, but basically I kinda like make that one step, sketch plan, preliminary, all in one.
You have 30 days from the...
Yeah, and it's always says in there that...
Well, actually, we have 30 days to do the site plan.
Yeah.
The site walk, I mean, and then you have, you have six months to come in, if you want, so it's up to you.
I just gotta do it before snow, then.
So...
Steve will be all right with that.
So do we want to do this on the 28th as well, or do you wanna do it on a... Sure, I'm sorry.
Are you talking about the 25th? Okay.
Let's, Pete has a question. Let's, Pete has a question.
I have one question. Lot number three is sold and the house already there.
Yeah.
And the, and lot one and two, they're up on the higher elevation.
Yeah.
Now, the driveways, I imagine, are gonna be paved and they're gonna drain down.
Mm-hmm.
Don't we already have a problem? Drainage coming down, down Christian Hill and you get to the lot number three, but is there a culvert in front of that?
Oh, I, I don't think there's any culverts in there. And I don't, I did the survey a year or two ago. So I don't remember how good the ditching is even along the side of the road.
So we can check in on the site, the site walk.
Yeah.
We'll have to work with the road commissioner on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Usually contact the road commissioner. And we gotta get permits for the driveways. Or at least have the road commissioner look at the, and approve driveway locations.
Okay, so you'd be checking with Sean and with Emo for two different things.
Yeah.
All right, now, let's see if we can talk, or I can talk sensibly about a site walk. Do we want to do it on the same day as the Dole's Ridge one? Do you, we've got ample time to do it at a different time?
You're gonna have enough time.
Well, we've got thirty days that we can, before we, we've got thirty days within which we can hold the site walk. I'm just asking if you wanna do it on two different days or you wanna combine them in one day? Might be getting dark if we do.
It's whether on a different day.
What, different day? Okay.
This one should be pretty simple because we're just looking at the road with the two lots. I can show you what the existing lot is that's sold. But I don't think we wanna hike up over the hill and look at everything, but.
So can you guys tell me what day you want and? Do it on the, what, what date would that be? So I can mess that date up.
May second.
May second? All right, you can't do it on the second?
I'd have to go before the twenty-ninth.
Oh, okay.
Well, you do, that's not a problem.
It's not determined yet.
Could we do it Wednesday, like, the first?
It's May day.
Yeah, who cares? Is Wednesday, the first, okay with everybody? No, you said you've gotta do it before the twenty-ninth.
I can't, I can't do May first.
Okay.
Yeah, I can do anytime before the twenty.
Okay.
What about that Wednesday before that, what's that, the twenty-fourth?
This is twenty-fourth.
Okay, that's a week from this coming Wednesday. A week from tomorrow. Okay, so.
So seventeen plus seven.
Wait a minute, we're doing the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth of April?
One of the twenty.
Yeah. What time?
Yes.
Can you do the twenty-fourth of April?
I go by it every day.
Okay. So we're gonna do it on April twenty-fourth, which is a Wednesday, at four o'clock. Is that agreeable?
Four o'clock PM.
Yeah.
It'd be pretty dark AM.
Not AM.
I'll bring a light.
Two of them on the same day, doing it on the twenty-first.
Fine by me, I'm asking you guys what you wanna do.
You guys do the twenty-fourth, or we can both on the twenty-fifth.
Bob is suggesting we do them both on the.
They do one at three, the other at one.
Yeah, I know. I mean, it's basically gonna be a point and.
Yeah.
We could do it tonight if you close your meeting quick enough. I'm serious.
All right.
We've got another half an hour daylight.
We could do four and five.
We need to do four and five, we need three and four. Three-thirty and four, I don't, you know.
So it means we do the, the Dole's Ridge and this one the same day. This one at three and Dole's Ridge at four.
Three-thirty on the twenty-fifth. And then four at one.
Well, that's cutting it, okay, three-thirty? Is that cutting it close?
Do this ride-by Dole's Ridge?
About three.
And what, what is the address?
The, I'll have stakes out there and I'll be out there before you guys. But it's from Route 25 if you go in. You kinda go around a little corner. There's a brook that crosses and it's gotta be less than two tenths of a mile in. When you see that brook, you go, there's gonna be a new house on the right. That's that lot three.
So I'll just put Christian Hill Road and drive up, past the brook.
Just look for the excavator.
Won't be able to miss it.
Okay, so.
I'll put survey signs out for you.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll find.
Combs, parking area.
We're going to do, we're going to do the, both of them on April twenty-fifth, which is a Thursday. This one at three o'clock and Dole's Ridge at four o'clock. Kill two birds with one stone. Okay? Is that all right with you, Mike? And Mr. Colby? Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Oh, you don't have to be there anyway if you don't want to. As long as somebody's there, you don't have to be if Mike is there. Yep, yep.
I don't think you'd wanna miss it. That's pretty exciting.
Oh, exactly.
Yes. All right, all righty.
Just up the road from Willic's old place.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. Got it?
Yes.
Okay. Does the board have any other questions for Mike before he leaves? Same note, thank you for coming in.
All right, thank you.
Okay, before we get to voting on Mr. Brown's, let's, oh, gosh. Did I send you all the bullet points?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so.
I have them right here.
Okay. And I sent them to all the select board, too. We don't have to go over them tonight, but I would ask you all to see if you want to add any of them to them as, under the LD-20031, bullet point number three. It now, it should read allows up to three dwellings per lot.
That's exactly what I thought.
Yeah. It was a typo on, typo on my part and a grammatical thing. And the rest, I have not, I have not spoken with Bob Delurier about anymore on the floodplain thing. But I don't think, I think that we need to keep it as, you know, succinct but cover all the major points. So maybe since Patty has, doesn't have a deadline for getting these, she obviously would like them. What's she wrecking the camera under there, Jason?
Can I ask a question on one of the bullet points?
Sure, sure.
So under the subdivision ordinance, fire protection and public safety, the very first one, it says changes location of residential or commercial buildings.
Yes, I was going to ask.
Fifteen hundred feet of a road to twelve hundred feet.
I was gonna ask.
It just didn't make sense to me.
I was going to ask Emo to check. I should send these to you, Emo, which I probably did not.
Do you wanna take a look at mine?
I believe Donna sent me a copy of it already.
Okay.
So you're, you're asking why fifteen to twelve hundred?
No, no. It's, the, the construction of the sentence doesn't make sense.
The sentence, the way it reads.
Did I write the sentence?
No, I did. That's why it doesn't make sense, Emo, 'cause I wrote it.
It's right there.
That's why we brought it down to what you have.
Yeah, so the distance from.
From what?
The water source, whether it's a cistern or a dry hydrant or whatever.
Okay, well, it doesn't say anything about a water source there.
How about?
It's the water source to.
How about if you would review those bullet points?
It just needs something added to make sense.
If you could email me if you agree with what's there. Obviously, changing number one. And if you feel that there are any more pertinent points, you don't have, you know, we just, the whole purpose for this is, the whole purpose of this is to not post. Guys, okay.
You don't, you don't wanna overwhelm the voter.
Right, right. Yeah, if we can all stick together here, please. The whole purpose of this is to just have bullet points when people are voting to hit the highlights.
Right.
Instead of posting the entire referendum question, which people are not gonna take the time to read.
Right.
And it only confuses people. That's why it's important to have pertinent ones.
Yep.
Doesn't have to cover every single, but the major, hit the highlights, so to speak. So if you would look over that one and email me whatever you think should be changed. Obviously, number one.
It'll probably be closer to the end of the week before I can.
Patty doesn't need these, we're not voting until June eleventh, so.
Okay, very good.
If I get them by the end of May, I'll be happy.
Joyce, I liked Darrell's idea of putting the bullet points with. We were gonna, you were gonna check.
They're going to be.
They are gonna do the bullet points while we vote, 'cause having them in the booth, we were missing some of those things before, so.
I'm, I will make enough copies and be sure that there are bullet points in each booth.
But what happened was, people were taking them out. They weren't attached to anything.
Well, then, we need to make a big sign that says, do not remove.
Yeah, something. Because there were people that didn't know they were there, 'cause they didn't see them.
Okay.
Patty wouldn't go along with handing them out when they put the ballots out?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was saying. I think Darrell's idea is good. I like that.
Then everybody gets one, 'cause then everybody has the option to at least read through.
Yeah, then they, then they can't say, I didn't get a copy.
Okay, okay.
They can take it home and just.
Right.
Yes.
Well, they're gonna, they're not gonna get them till they come to vote, so they.
Well, I mean, they, after they vote, they can take it home and review.
By then, it's too late to study, 'cause they will have already voted.
They'll, but they'll read them.
They can change their vote.
If they have them with their voting materials, they'll read them.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean. We'll have them posted in the, in the booth and each, just will, the double, triple coverage, if you will, and hand them out to everybody who comes. They get a ballot. As long as Patty approves of this, and I will ask her about that. Okay?
How long is that gonna type of booth?
A lot shorter than if we had the whole referendum question there. They were.
Good point.
It's, it's, you know what it is, Pete? It's one of our, we're trying to educate the public as to what these referendum questions contain. Because half the time, they'll go in and vote no, 'cause they don't know what they're voting on. And they, and they, and they come, there, there are, there's a, there are people who don't believe or trust or agree with what the planning board does. And if we try to clarify this and make it easier so they understand, then they're more apt to have a positive vote come out of this. 'Cause a lot of these, it's, it's really, I don't wanna say, well, it is mandatory for floodplain and LD-2003 that the town passed this. Because if they don't, with 2003, they're gonna have to abide by it anyway. And with floodplain, it means that the town perhaps would get no FEMA money for any road damage that was done during storms. There are, I think, six residents in town that are, already have FEMA insurance, and they would not be able to renew it. And anybody else who built in the floodplain would not be able to get floodplain insurance. So those two in particular are really, really important that people hopefully will vote yes on.
Isn't the, isn't the floodplain really about trying to collect more money for FEMA?
I'm not gonna get into that. I just know what happens if we don't vote for it. It's up to the individual, but.
So I would suggest on the floodplain one, that before you say town has to adopt, that you say FEMA mandates.
Okay.
This.
That the town.
Dash, town needs to adopt by, and, 'cause then you do a nice job explaining why after. But I think if at the beginning, you put FEMA mandated.
He also gets to tell us.
That's the first bullet point?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we haven't, haven't really gone over them. I'm gonna redo this.
We haven't, but.
Yeah, yeah.
I just kind of read through ones that didn't make sense to me. And I thought, if they don't make sense to me, and I'm sitting here, then it's probably not gonna make sense to other people.
How about if I say FEMA mandates adoption?
Yes.
By.
And then dash, town must adopt by July seventeenth.
Okay.
Yeah. The rest of it was fine, it just needed a preface.
Okay, gotcha.
And these bullet points will be put in that paper as well, correct?
Yes.
So that they can see that weekly newspaper.
Oh, the, the shopping guy.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll be all over the place, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and when we have our.
Where only a few people will vote for, but are still gonna win.
It will.
When the select board has their public hearing, we'll hand out these.
So that we don't have to deal with FEMA not letting them be insured.
Okay. But the rest of, everybody, just go over these and obviously, maybe the next time we meet, we should firm up. I'll, I'll correct this and I'll.
There's a typo on the first one here that should be incorrect. I had trouble because it says in space, correct.
What?
Two words.
Oh, yeah.
Just pick the space out, if you're okay.
Typos, you know. Correct typos. And then there is one right after it. It's a little ironic, right?
I wondered if anybody would get that.
Right.
All right, let's go on to the minutes, if we could, please. I won't ask anyone who has any corrections to state now, because I have a lot of additions that I feel need to go into it. It's my personal belief that, and this is from experience of being on the board for, let me see, I forget it out. I've been on this board since 2006. And so my experience is that if, even a year down the road, or five years down the road, or whatever the case might be, if you want to, if somebody brings something up, or there's a subdivision that comes in or that has reference to the past, if we don't have complete minutes, nobody knows what went on. So it's very important to include as much information as possible for the, well, you know, for accuracy and for future reference. So I will ask you folks to, if there are corrections anybody wants to make, then I'll.
I have a few.
Go ahead.
Now, I already gave you the ones from page one, which was spelled Amish right. But on page two, at the bottom, on, in the paragraph that begins with John Brady.
Yeah.
If you get down to the part in italics.
Yeah.
It should say tiny homes.
Yeah.
Do not have wheels.
Yeah.
And then it should say and do not, because you can't have a do and a does in the same sentence.
And do not include a trailer?
Right. Tiny homes do not have wheels and do not include a trailer, semi-trailer, cap-trailer, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
I didn't see that first back.
And then, on page three, at the very top, I don't like the word "however" that starts in front of Chair Foley. It doesn't make sense. However is usually responding to something, and it's not. I think it should just...
Where, where are we?
Very top of page three.
Oh, the first sentence, okay.
However should go away.
Make it up.
Yep, it just needs to go. And I think there was one more thing. Oh, um, sorry. Back on page two, it says Bonnie Lord asked for Foley to review, and we agreed that we need to put Chair Foley there.
What paragraph is?
Uh, right above the John Brady one, the Bonnie Lord highlighted at the bottom of page two.
Ask Chair Foley?
Yes, just ask Chair Foley. Oh, did you already, oh, you already corrected it. Okay, I had the old ones. Okay, good, we're good. And that's all I...
Is Donna everybody else's? I don't know, I printed it. It seems to be...
No, Donna?
Yes, it is, it is.
I had printed it off at home, and that's where I did my corrections. I didn't do them on the new one.
Okay. Does anybody else have corrections?
Um, just on page three, right at the end where it says, "Minutes of March." Um, you just, the, the sentence stops at "public prior to the June." You wanna bring referendum and vote up to...
I, I don't know where you want to give it.
At the bottom. Do you see where it says, "Minutes of March 18th?"
Yeah.
Okay, go up. Do you see where it says?
Yeah, it should say, "June 11th period," at the end of that paragraph.
And, but then it says, "Referendum vote," so wouldn't, wouldn't you put it all up on that same...
I don't know where anybody is.
Are, are you on page three, Donna?
I don't know why the computer put, I'm on page three.
So that, she, this means...
I don't know why that's down.
Yeah, that's okay. I just wanted you to know that it was there. And you want that to say, "June 11th"?
It should say, "June 11th." It just stops at June.
Prior to the June 11th, a referendum vote.
Wait a minute. The board will have to hold anything prior...
I, I had the same things that Grace had, so...
Okay, so we're all good.
Yep.
Thank you for being so shocked with that lady.
Yep, hold on.
Did you say the last name as Brady?
No.
It's Bailey, B-A-I-L-E-Y.
Okay. We've changed it twice now, so...
Who, who are you talking about?
It started with Barry, and then it went to Brady, so now it's Bailey.
I'd like to show you how he wrote it.
Are, are we talking about?
Is it B-A-I-L-E-Y? Okay.
Is that on the paragraph on page?
B-A-I-L-E-Y.
Mm-hmm.
Talking about tiny homes.
I wish you could've seen how he printed it. So to...
All right, mine. Does anybody else have any others? One minor, before I get into the one. On page two, under floodplain management ordinance, uh, the second paragraph, Bob DeSolne, DeSolneas, he's a senior insurance specialist. Take the S off. He's only one person. He's not plural.
That's a good one. I didn't catch that.
Um, also, in, I, I think we should add to that paragraph, um, that, what I just said a few minutes ago. Now, you, if you don't get this word for, word, you and I can talk, Donna, but it should state that no flood insurance will be available to individual homeowners if the town doesn't adopt this referendum question. Second sentence.
You want that the second sentence?
Uh, no, that's, no. I'm saying, I've got another sentence to give you to add to this. That should be added at wherever you wanna add it. I don't care.
Satisfy the bangs?
That's fine. Or make another, make another paragraph.
Okay.
And, and this, the sentence I just read, and the one I'm gonna give you, should be in this new paragraph. The town may not be allowed FEMA reimbursements for...
For FEMA?
May not be allowed FEMA reimbursements for flood damage to town roads. And I think that's more than a "may." He, he was pretty clear that, or I got a letter from the, Bob's boss, stating that the town, uh, that's, she said that what could happen would be that, if the town submitted an application for FEMA reimbursement, and they do not have this referendum question adopted, at best, the town would be at the bottom of the list for any consideration for reimbursement. So that's why I said, "May not," but it's a pretty serious issue, okay? So that's all for that.
So who handles this? Somebody comes in for a permit?
Code enforcement officer.
Huh?
Yeah. Code enforcement officer.
You'll be checking floodplain.
Yeah, and we will have maps.
Based on the new map.
Yeah, we will have maps that will delineate. The second area is under LD 2003. It's on page two of the minutes. I would like to add into that, um, that bullet point number three. And don't worry, I'm gonna tell you what it is, okay? I'm just trying to figure out where to put it. Probably under probably a separate sentence after that second paragraph, okay? The second paragraph starts Chair Foley, and then start a new paragraph under that that states, um, "This law will allow up to three dwelling units per lot."
For a six-acre lot, right?
Right, and, but we've already stated that they have to, well, that's also, that's true, that, um, it should state that, how am I gonna phrase this one?
Well, if you left that alone, it said, "Provided for lot."
No, no, we've, we've gotta make it more clear about they have to double the size of their lot.
Or triples, how's that goes?
Why?
No, double.
Allowed to have three dwellings on that lot?
No, double. It's double.
Two dwellings or a?
Accessory.
An accessory. Okay, uh, bullet point one, two, three, four, five, okay? Okay, um, if another house is added, the lot size would have to double. Period. Next sentence. There is no, skip that. Additional houses do not have to meet frontage requirements.
Road, they don't, they don't have road frontage?
Yeah, road frontage.
Road frontage requirements, okay. Well, frontage is gonna be on a road.
Well, there's another frontage that sets back from the road, which would be required to meet.
And, okay.
Road center?
Do not need to meet road extra...
Road, road.
Do not need to meet road frontage.
Yeah.
Requirements.
Requirements, okay. And...
Second lot wouldn't need road frontage?
No additional driveway.
Or driveway, yeah.
Is required.
George, can you read the first?
Yep, just, I've got one more thing to do, one more thing to do. They would have to meet setback requirements.
Besides the road front, they really didn't do anything.
They would have to meet...
Setback. Or, or you can just say, "Setback requirements have to be met." That's the best way to say it. Set, setback requirements have to be met.
Okay, so we're gonna start it with the word setbacks?
Yep, yep. You can just ship it off to me, if you want. Okay, um, so that's all for LD. Yes, you wanted to say setback.
Yeah, the, the very first part of that sentence, the dictation regarding the doubling of the lot.
Yep.
Can you read that back to me again?
What did I say about the doubling of the lot?
Um, do you want me to read what I've got?
Yeah.
Um, number five, if another, and this is short.
Well, you don't have to put number five in there. I'm just...
Oh, I don't?
No, no.
In short, if another house is added to the lot, added, the lot size will need to be doubled.
Yeah, I, I don't like that. I, I understand what you're trying to do, but you can't, I mean, you've got a lot. What you really are saying, that if you wanna put a second house on that lot,
Mm-hmm.
then you need to have enough acreage to satisfy the second.
No, you have, no, no, no.
You're not gonna, you can't double the lot.
That is not, that is not what it says, Bob. The, the 2003 says, and I cited the example, if you have a three-acre house, and you want to put another house on it, you've gotta have six acres.
That's what I'm saying.
But that's, that, that...
Isn't that what we said?
That defies the rule.
It is, but it sounds, I don't know, the way, the way it sounds.
Fifteen-acre lot.
You need six acres.
Thirty acres to build a whole house.
You have to have a minimum of six acres.
Right. I think it's just, 'cause you need the second three-acre lot.
Yeah, and, and if you...
What if you say, "To be doubled"?
You wouldn't have any more dwelling lots, because the law says you can only put two.
We can't hear.
Well, no.
So you'd have to subdivide.
No.
The best thing I'm trying to say is that if, if I own three lots and I'm in a subdivision, I'm boxed in. I don't qualify for that.
Right.
You can come out and say that. That if you don't have a six-acre lot, it's not happening.
No, that's not true. You can take two lots and divide them.
Yeah, no.
If you had them.
Well, that's what you just said, that you had three lots in a subdivision.
No, no, I own a three-acre lot in a subdivision.
You're not gonna be...
I'm not qualified for a second home on that lot.
You can't put a second house on it.
An accessory dwelling.
You can have your accessory divided.
Yeah, but you can't have that.
Yeah, you're right. That's why I say, they didn't really do nothing here. Speak of.
All right, just leave it the way it is for now, Donna. Just leave it the way it is for now, and we'll talk about it.
Now, I use a three-acre.
That's why I said, we needed it anyway, before we did this.
Yeah.
The only thing you're saving is the frontage.
Is the road frontage.
Well, my point being that I, I want it, in the minutes, I want it clearly stated that we discuss this, and, and, uh, obviously, when, when, when somebody comes in to do a subdivision, they're gonna have to go to the ordinance and, and, and see it, so, all right.
I was just trying to make it clear as possible, and, and, you know, if you like it the way it was, that's fine. I just wanted to bring that up.
Mm-hmm.
Since when did government ever wanna make anything better?
Okay.
They don't.
All right, the other thing is on page three, under extraction ordinance. The second paragraph down starts, "As Chair Foley read the new language."
Mm-hmm.
I want...
Oh, I did got that in the minutes.
Yeah, but you didn't state what Bonnie wanted, and you didn't, so I'd like to have the verbiage, and I, um...
I'll go back and pick that up.
Okay.
From the DVD.
Yeah, okay. So if you could just add specifically what she asked for.
I don't know why I didn't type that.
Okay. And then, on the next paragraph down, or in a separate sentence, 'cause this refers to a different person.
After, at the end of the next paragraph?
No, start, oh, yeah, where, start a separate sentence after the one we just talked about.
Made at the time? Or a...
Yep, yep, yep.
Bullet point.
Yep, that's okay. After the "made at the time," have a new sentence.
Okay.
Because Judy Waymoth asked if, she's stated, let, let me talk this through, and you can see what you wanna put in. She stated that she has a dug, oh, she has a well, and she wanted to know if her well was polluted, would the owner of the gravel pit have to replace? And, and, and yes, they would have to replace quality and quantity of water if a, if an individual well is, um, deemed unusable.
Like, one well that can pave the road.
This is just so that people know that we heard their comments and that we addressed them, and...
Can I say something about LD 2003?
Yeah.
I was reading the Wyndham paper at home tonight before this meeting, and there's a long article in Wyndham about they don't have affordable housing, and they specifically brought up LD 2003. But is that really gonna help them?
That's, well, they are a town that probably has sewerage, and they fall in a different...
They do.
They had fallen a different category than we do. We do not have sewerage or water.
I was comparing it to Liddedale, so I guess...
No, can't, no, can't. So other than that, I don't have any other corrections. So, Darryl, did you have any? Did somebody say I did? No, he's good, okay. So is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 1st as amended? Bob made the motion?
Bob seconded.
Victoria seconded. All in favor? Okay.
There's one other thing we haven't done.
Uh, no, there's a couple of things we haven't done. Don't worry, I got it down here.
I just, I need to draw a diagram.
The, so let's now go to Joe Brown's, um, request. And also, I, I gave Patty today the wording for how the referendum, I gave her the wording for the referendum questions. And the first one will read, "Shall amendments to the ordinance entitled zoning ordinance be enacted?" That will be the first, um, that will be the first one that's mostly housekeeping, and, uh, you know, the change of the 35 to, to, um, whatever feet. That's the housekeeping one. Second referendum question will read, "Shall an amendment to the zoning ordinance entitled extractive industry be enacted?" Once again, all the bullet points will be up. The third referendum question, "Shall an amendment to the subdivision ordinance entitled fire protection and public safety be enacted?" That's Emo's change. Fourth referendum question, "Shall an amendment to the zoning ordinance entitled floodplain management be enacted?" That's what we just spoke about, that, you know, with the FEMA stuff. And the fifth referendum question will be, "Shall an amendment to the zoning ordinance entitled LD 2003 be enacted?" And that's what we just talked about. So that's how the referendum questions will be. And that's why it's so important to have the bullet points, 'cause basically, those things don't say much of anything.
Is this the order that you want them on the ballot when they vote?
That's up to Patty. I'm assuming she will go that way, and I'll make sure that the bullet points are coordinated with that. But I will coordinate that with her. Okay, let's do, um, Mr. Brown's. So we're going to go to page, is it 56, in the good old zoning ordinance? All righty. So this is 6G, Donna?
Yeah?
Stand as applicable to conditional uses. We're doing the usual A, B, C, D stuff. A, the use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies. Not applicable. B, traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance, and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with performance standards in this ordinance. The answer to that is yes. There will be access from Mildred Road.
Lane.
Lane, thank you. Mildred Lane. C, the site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations. Not applicable. D, adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made. Not applicable. E, adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made. Not applicable. F, a stormwater drainage system meeting state standards should be installed. Not applicable. G, adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made. Not applicable. H, there is adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed, proposed use and for fire protection purposes. I think we should, um, is Emo here?
Yeah.
Um, Emo, do you have any specific requirements that you, on the, on Joe Brown and that piece of land next to Tico, where he's gonna home? So, there's nothing. Not applicable.
Did he say anything?
He said no.
Oh, I didn't see you. Okay, H is N-A?
Yep.
Okay.
I, provisions for buffer strips and onsite landscaping, et cetera, is not applicable. Um, what's that?
Under I, um...
I was just wondering if, I stopped for signs that, that there will, um, there will be no lighting on the houses. And also, I think that we need to put in here that he has to go before the code enforcement officer for a signed permit.
And a driveway entrance permit.
Yeah, well, that is back up under the Mildred Road. He, that's, that he has to go before you for, well, he has to go before Sean.
That's B.
Yeah, up, up, up under the, um, traffic access, under B.
Yeah.
Um, he has to confer with the highway commissioner, Sean.
Public works director.
They don't plow, do they? Do they plow that road?
Mildred Road?
Road, I know.
That's a private road.
Do they plow that road?
I think it's a private.
No, I didn't think so. That's a private road.
That's a private road? Well, he still would have to meet driveway standards, yeah.
Have to what?
Have to meet the driveway standards for construction of the driveway. All right, so change that, if you would. He doesn't have to go to Sean, 'cause Mildred is a private road.
He does have to go to Sean.
He does not.
He does not, okay.
So he has to coordinate with the code enforcement officer on the driveway construction. Okay?
Yeah.
J, our performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met, yes. K, the use will not result in unsafe or unhealthful conditions, no, it will not. And L, the use will not have an adverse impact on natural beauty, historic sites are rare and irreplaceable natural areas. Correct, it will not. And one of the things that we need, that I will be adding to all notice of decisions from now on is that all this, all state, and if you could put that in the minutes, please, um, under the notice of decision, all state permits must be received prior to the CEO issuing any further permits. Does that make sense to you, Greg?
Prior to the code office, enforcement officer-
Issuing any permits. All state permits must be received. Where, this has to go on all notice of decisions from now on. Where applicable, all bonds have to be posted prior to code enforcement officer issuing permits. And no permits issued until all the conditions above have been met.
Where do you see all that?
She's adding.
No, we, we talked about this like a-
Not the order to the letter of, to the letter of decision.
Yeah, to, to the, this goes on the notice of decision. And I forgot, I had it written in here, and I just wanted to be sure that we, okay, so.
The last one that you said, where applicable, all bonds and no permits.
Well, I said, where applicable, uh, bonds must be posted prior to issuing permits, period. And then separate sentence. CEO shall not issue any permits until all, all conditions above, meaning we've, you know, when, when the notice of decision, it states what has, have been met. So in other words, we've had people who have gone ahead and done things and gotten permits before they met the conditions that the planning board has put on the approval of their plans. And, um, so this just makes it clear to the applicant that from now on, they're not going to get, this is a past practice.
Could you give me a reading of that last one? It starts with CEO shall not issue-
Yeah.
Until-
Shall not issue any permits until all conditions, all the conditions above have been met.
New conditions?
Until all the conditions above have been met. Do these go on individual notice of decisions? So this tells the fellow, gal, person, whoever they are, that they're not going to get anything from Craig until they've met the conditions that we, and if we want to, we can put timeframes on them. But that, that doesn't apply to every, uh, application, okay? So, it's, um, I, I would ask for a vote to approve Joe Brown's application for what did you call these things?
I call it a retail sale of sheds.
Okay, for retail shale, sale of sheds.
I'll take that motion.
Second.
Wait, the conditions. The conditions being that he coordinates with the code enforcement officer on the construction of the driveway, that he coordinate with the code enforcement officer on the approval of any signs, or a sign, and no lighting on the individual buildings. And I, I forget which section talks about banners, but he spoke about putting a banner up, and there is a time limit on how long banners can be up. So he, uh, just, um, must meet, hold on just a minute.
I'm not going to need much of a sign, he's only going to be seventy people in the road.
Right, right. But, but he, but he talked about hanging banners on the,
Yeah.
On the things, and that's a no-no for, I think it's-
Oh, it's just one banner.
Well, even if it is, it's a limited amount of time he can do it. He, he must, um, coordinate with the code enforcement officer on the, any banner, not plural, but banner he wishes to hang. And there is definitely a timeframe, I just don't know where it is, right in here, off the top of my head. Yeah.
Now, Joyce, um, the Terrys wanted to have a no parking sign on the edge of the road, so nobody parked on Mildred.
Oh, that's right, too, one of, one of, that's right, too. Um, and, thank you, Greg. There shall be a no parking sign on Mildred Road. Anything else? That's it?
Yeah, they were just worried about the lighting and the, and the no parking on the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Do those people-
Have any power down there anymore?
No, they are butters.
On the end of Mildred Lane?
Well, they're on, they live on Mildred Lane. Okay. All right, so Darrell motioned, Bob seconded it, seconded it, did, 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 did. Any, uh, everyone in favor of the approval of Mr. Brown's application? Okay, very good.
All in favor?
Yes.
Who seconded it, please?
Bob.
Bob.
The last item is, um, now that we have a full board here, we have to vote on having a chairperson for the next year. So is there a motion for a chairperson for the next?
I nominate Joyce.
I seconded. All in favor?
You can probably get half a dozen seconds on that one.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. All in favor? I won't vote for myself. And I would move that Bob be voted as vice chair for next year.
Make a motion, Bob be the vice chair.
Any second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Can vote for that one. Okay, thank you, guys, I appreciate it. I also, today I was curious as to how long I have been on this board since I just got reelected. And like I said, I was, I came on in two thousand and six, according to past, um, town reports, and I've been chairman except for one year since two thousand and seven. So you guys could be getting sick of me soon. But I think-
You're replaceable.
I know about that, but that's why I get pushy sometimes, I guess, yeah. All right, any other business? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Bob moved to adjourn. Pete seconded, all in favor? Thank you very much. Good night, everyone. We will see you on May sixth.